Good evening. The opportunity to sign up for public comment or public hearing expires when the Chair calls the meeting to order. Signing sheets are located on the podium. Please take the opportunity to switch all electronic devices to silent mode. Our meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order Monday, October the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M., Winsboro, South Carolina. Next, would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Something I want to put on the record right quick before we do the agenda. I think there was a question on whether or not that this meeting was advertised appropriately, and it was. But I want to say a twenty-four-hour minimum notice of public meetings is required to go out. The agenda is required to be posted at the location of the meeting, to be sent to any media outlets requesting notice, and on the county's website. Fairfield County as a courtesy also posts the agenda on the Fairfield County Facebook page. Although we try to post on Facebook at the same time, the agenda is posted on the website and at the county building, the agenda may not always be posted on social media at the same time. Citizens who wish to receive the agenda by email can request to be added to the Clerk of Council's mailing list. Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Green.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the action, item nine B, until after item seventeen, executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to amend the agenda to move nine B to either executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the amended agenda. Now we are back to the actual agenda, to accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of the agenda as amended. Next, we are down to invocation. Counselman, Mr. Robinson.
Before I bow our head, I'd just like to keep in mind the Armstrong family and the Young family in my district, they each had a death the past week, past week or two. So let's keep there in special prayers. So let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for allowing us for another meeting. We ask you to guide us, to help us come together for a better Fairfield. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, September the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero approval of minutes for nine twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. Item six, public presentations, none. Item seven, first public comments session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Several persons signed up to speak. First person, Peter Ganey. Jeff Schaefer.
I'm not sure I understand the reason why we're having our, having a public information person. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
So we've hired someone to do that? Is that what's going to be happening? I'm always confused when we do certain things that seem to be in left field. Why would we take the time to have someone speak? This person speaks for the council or the county? You know, I'm just confused.
Mr. Schaefer, Ms. Johnson is going to do a presentation when it gets to county administrator's report, and she will go more in depth about what the person is going to do. But you, I mean, you're welcome to speak on it.
So shall we speak after that happens? That would be beneficial to me.
No, sir, we got to speak now. I'm sorry. No, sir, you got to speak now on the public information officer.
Okay. Well, since I don't know much about it, or who it is, or what it is, and I don't know what it was, I'd like to know, well, while I'm up here, I'm just going to ask you, when are you going to make the public speaking for the second part of the citizens who don't speak of something that's on the council come about? I'll leave that with you, but we, the citizens, want to speak and let you know what's going on and have a conversation. And we can't have that if you cut out the second citizen's time. And I don't know whether that was done legally, professionally, or politely, but I'd like to know when that's going to be reinstated. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. I don't know why a county this size, as small as we are, needs a public information officer, unless you're planning on turning that into a propaganda information officer. This county has so many outlets for communication for its size. Each one of you have Facebook accounts. The county has a Facebook account. Every agency in the county, every large agency in the county has a Facebook account. All free information outlets. There's three newspapers that cover this county, not counting the newspapers and the news media in Columbia. We've been in WLTX and other information dispensing media. Why do we need to spend, I believe the salary was sixty-five thousand dollars, not counting benefits, when we're paying more in taxes, just got our new bills, when we're going to borrow more money, when we have all these outlets for free? How can a county this size have so many people that are running departments? We have interim administrator, assistant administrator, a development, economic development, and a manager and an assistant, H. R. manager, all these positions, and nobody's articulate enough to get the message across? Nobody knows what's going on to get the message across. So with benefits, it's probably going to cost us eighty thousand dollars? When they're going to be doing the job our representatives were elected to do, that's to communicate to the constituents? You're going to have a middleman, a high-paid middleman, in times when families are suffering through inflation, in times when we have raised taxes? It harkens back to the birdcage liner that was sent out by council last year. All this does is distance you guys from the public. Distance you guys gives you a buffer. You need to be facing forward to the public, not facing backwards, not backing up, not having a middleman, P. I. O. officer, do the job that you were elected to do, which in large part is to communicate to your constituents. If you can't do that, and what you're admitting you can't do that, that's a sad case for us all. But I think this council is sharp enough to communicate on its own and not waste the taxpayers' money setting a buffer between you and the constituents. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to item eight A, public hearings, ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the purchase of real property that meets the necessary requirements for said property to be used as a suitable location for a wastewater treatment site with discharge into the Broad River and other matters related thereto. We will open this hearing at six ten P. M.
Randy Bright signed up to speak.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Eureka! You guys are making a statement with this proposed ordinance that is long overdue. And that statement is, we need economic development, we need industry, we need jobs, priority one in Fairfield, priority one. All the empirical evidence shows that this is the right move, is to move forward with a waste treatment plant, which is the linchpin to our economic plan, which runs out through thirty-four and up to the mega site. It's, I love it. I love the movement forward. I love the acknowledgement that Fairfield County lags behind the rest of the counties in all things economic. We haven't any economic development in, well, almost three years, any real development. We lag behind in all forms of income, household income, individual income. We lag behind everybody and almost everybody in the poverty rate, poverty rate for children. We need economic development, and you guys are acknowledging that. I think this is very important. It's priority one, nothing else even comes close to what you're doing today. Because if you look back, why do you think we lost three thousand people in the last census, when the rest of the state grew like twelve percent? We didn't have opportunity. We didn't have jobs, good-paying jobs. And you guys are going to, are on the right path with the prioritizing this economic development as number one over anything else. And of course, the linchpin is what you're looking for, a Broad River, Broad River facility that promotes growth, economic development up through to the mega site through thirty-four. Absolutely brilliant, guys. This plan is, is going to work, and we've waited for it for ages, struggling people out there, and now we can move forward with a number-one priority, economic development, where everything else is second to it. And you guys are making a statement tonight by making this step forward. Thank you for that. Thank you for understanding that the economic development, jobs, and industry are our number-one Achilles' heel and our greatest need. What a statement. Thank you so much.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close this hearing at six thirteen P. M. Next, we are down to nine A, third and final reading, ordinance eight twenty-five, and ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the purchase of real property that meets the necessary requirements for said property to be used as a suitable location for a wastewater treatment site with discharge into the Broad River and other matters related thereto.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Having no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on nine A, third and final reading, ordinance eight twenty-five. Nine B was moved till either executive session. Next, we are down to board and commission minutes. We have none. Eleven A, board and commission appointments, that is a action item. Ms. Swerengen has recommended Carrie Matthews for the zoning board of appeals for District Three.
I beg to motion to appoint Ms. Carrie Matthews to the zoning board of appeals.
It's been moved and properly seconded to appoint Ms. Carrie Matthews to the zoning board of appeals for District Three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Ms. Carrie Matthews will represent District Three on the zoning board of appeals. Next, we are down to old business. This is the old administration building update. Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, council. As a reminder, the old admin building is held as collateral for twenty thirteen I. P. R. B. bond, that's installment purchase revenue bond. It is, that collateral is going to be moved to the D. S. S. D. Heck Building on Cacade Bridge Road. So I would ask council if you would delay the disposition of the old admin building property until we get word back from the E. D. A. recompete grant. And Ms. Williams, will you remind council of that particular grant?
Yes, ma'am. If you remember, a few meetings ago, we talked about sending a letter of support for the E. D. A. recompete grant program that the Cattano Regional Council governments and the Central Midland Council governments were cooperating on to look at making opportunity hubs, workforce hubs in Union, Fairfield, and Chester Counties. We should hear back about that grant. They say in the winter, so there's any time between now and maybe March or so. So we should know in the next three or four months whether or not the region received that grant, and we want to put that building up as a potential source, as opportunity hub.
Ms. Johnson, will this require a vote going forward to take collateral off of the old administration building and put it somewhere else?
Well, you want the answer?
If you don't mind. Mr. Chair, members of council, I think what we're going to do is I'm going to need to discuss with our bond council the necessary documentation. I can't say at this moment whether or not that's going to be necessary, but once I am able to discuss this matter with bond council, we can bring that back if necessary as it relates to any potential vote.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
But when it does, when it gets to the disposition of the property, yes, you all will have to vote, whether to sell it or to keep it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So you, you're not going to sell it? Now, somebody that, what all she was talking about might want to buy that and use that as a?
It would still be our property, but yeah, they would repurpose it for like a workforce hub or something like that. So this grant would help pay for all the renovations, but it would still be county property.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we are down to thirteen A, new business. This is a councilation of county council meeting, November the twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, because this is a action item, and this is the week of Thanksgiving week. So we need a motion to counsel that meeting for Thanksgiving week.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six zero on counsel of that county council meeting. And Mr. Robinson apologizes, he has to take a quick break outside for a second. Next, we are down to, let the record reflect six zero, I don't know if I said that, but six zero. Now we are down to fourteen, county administrator's report, item eight, introduction of new public information officer, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Johnson.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson. Counsel, this person really needs no introduction. I think everybody knows that. Mr. Gene Stevens has been selected as the county's public information officer. He's been with the Chamber of Commerce a little over five years. He promotes tourism in the county. He's managed sixteen events every year. And also, he's, he has a very good working relationship with the citizens, the media, municipalities, and counties. So why is a?
Hi, Gene.
Why is a P. I. O. needed? To actually disseminate accurate information to the public about county business and how the decisions affect our citizens. And we have all seen and read where sometimes decisions are made here. It's been explained in detail, but it's not being reported accurately or not fully reported. Also, with this particular position, he'll be responsible for rim and cuttings, managing the Facebook account, other social media, interacting with the media, providing information about services that we provide to our citizens, updating the website, and especially dealing with all the F. O. I. A. requests that we receive. It's almost getting to the point, it's a full-time job with all the requests and meeting the deadlines that we have. Also coordinating the release of information during disasters, tornadoes, freezing temperatures, et cetera. So we know Mr. Gene talks a lot, but Ms. Williams is timing you for exactly one minute.
Good evening, council. Actually, she told me thirty seconds earlier, because I had to give a minute to Dylan.
I'm showing you grace.
But I'll say, I've been here for twelve years in Fairfield County, and I literally have dedicated the last twelve years of my life to making this county the best I can. And I'm excited about doing that in a different capacity. And I look forward to working with you all, working with the citizens, working with the media, and just trying to do the best to build Fairfield County to be a strong county. Would you like me to go ahead and introduce?
If you would like to, yes, that would be fine.
Okay. All right. So the, in my capacity as chamber president, tomorrow officially is my last day, and our board came to us with an idea about a month ago about not necessarily going through the application process right now, but getting someone to be the chamber president on an interim basis. And I'm excited to say, and I'm actually very proud to say, because I look at this young man like a son. But so Mr. Dylan Pullen is going to be the interim chamber president, at least through June of next year, and then the chamber will decide exactly what they want to do moving forward. But he has been around the chamber for, golly, probably half his life. So he worked for the chamber for five years. He left at the age of nineteen to go start his own church. So he started his own church, and then once it got off the ground, for the past eight months, eight months, he's been working on getting his funeral director license with Shai's Funeral Home. And now the board, he actually came back on the board and was the board chair, and then the board asked him to be the interim president. So he graciously stepped up and did that. And honestly, it made me feel a whole lot better whenever I found out that that's the direction they wanted to go in, because he's an outstanding young man. He'd do amazing things for Fairfield County, and he has been doing it for years. So I think you all know that. But I will invite Dylan up real quick.
Did I keep it on a minute?
No, sir, you didn't. But that's okay. That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. It's an honor to have been selected by the board to serve as the interim president. I think we could all agree that the chamber has a longstanding legacy of being a very vital part of this community, and it's an honor to continue that legacy as the interim president, hopefully president, if they don't run me out of town before that. But you guys are so gracious to have supported us all this time, and I look forward to working with you both individually and as a council as a whole, to fulfill our mission to improve the overall quality of life for everybody who calls this county home. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Any council members?
I'd just like to say welcome to both of you for your new positions.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say it, but you know, I was glad this weekend to see Rock Around the Clock back. I think it was, I thought it was great. You know, I can't speak for everybody else, but I thought it was great. And I think that both of you, along with all your staff that you had, did a great job at Rock Around the Clock.
Our, our board, our, like Tracy, Dylan, I mean, even Dylan stepped up. Dylan, like they really did pretty much everything. It was an amazing job. I haven't heard any complaints, so that's a good thing. And I think the community was excited about having it back, and it turned out actually better than I expected. So they did a phenomenal job of that.
Ms. Green?
Just like to say welcome to both of you on your new positions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms.
Okay, and the Economic Development Committee meeting, Ms. Williams?
Just want to put it out there, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting Monday, the the coming Monday, October sixteenth at three o'clock. We are inviting all of council to join the committee meeting, because we'll be discussing the goals associated with the Economic Development Strategic Plan and subsequent action items. So even though you may not be on that committee, as long as the chair of the committee, which is Councilman Gilbert, grants you permission, you can speak during those committee meetings as well. So it's a way for everybody to participate before we bring the plan to full council for a vote and adoption. And then we'll be here in council chambers as well.
Next, our September twenty twenty-three finance report is online, and you also have received that report. And as usual, please review if you have any questions, comments, need additional information on any light item, please let me know. And that is my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams. Next, we are down to item fifteen, clerk de councils' report. There is none. Item sixteen, county council time, any council members wish to be heard? Place Chair, give her.
Yes, I'd just like to kind of piggyback off of something Mr. Robinson said earlier before he did the invocation. We have another family that's bereathing today. Mr. Randy Sims passed away today, so we want to give our condolences to him and his family.
Ms. Green?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the program participants and the county departments that worked so diligently last week to make ribbon cutting at the River Road Fire Station successful. Nearly three hundred families in the southern part of River Road Ridgeway will have insurance standard office, S I S O ratings decrease from ten to five. This rating is used to reduce the cost of homeowners' insurance, and I think that all of the citizens in that area are really pleased and happy to have that occur. Chamber of Commerce worked with us, community members, Reverend Fran Reagan and Lake Waterie Presbyterian Church, Mr. Jimmy Ray Douglas came out, who started the project originally. Clerk de council, council members, administration, firefighters, emergency service personnel, police officers, the building maintenance folks, local town officials, school board officials, Public Works did an absolutely excellent job of getting, clearing the grounds and tidying up everything around the station. So I think it truly was a very cooperative effort, showing what community and council working together can do to benefit the public. Thank you.
Mr. Roof?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. One is about, and if somebody maybe has an answer about where we stand on the administration hiring a recruiting firm and do we have one hired? I mean, I'm getting a lot of questions. This has been going on for quite a while.
Yes, sir. It should be very soon. Yes, sir.
Like?
The next week or two. Should be.
Next week or two. So we should have one?
Hiring a firm, yes, sir.
In a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
And then, because I mean, I get a lot of, but the, so then, at what time after that do you think we'll have a job posting? And does anybody know that? I mean, if you get one hired within a couple of weeks, will they be able to post a job in the next couple of weeks after that? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I'll get with Ms. Washington, who's over the procurement for that, and let you know.
The reason is, I mean, it's kind of been dragging on like the audit, even though the audit, we got kind of thrown on the bus on that one. But anyway, I think we just need to get going so we can show we're making some progress here. And then the other one is, and I know Mr. Morgan just got back from Ireland, but that I asked about was the second public comment session. What are we going to, and you may not know the answer to that right now, or?
Well, I'll speak on that.
Or you do?
Yeah, either consulting with council members. I decided it was in the best interest of the council and the county to take it off for the time being. But if this is something that the council would like to discuss, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Well, just to comment on that, I was against taking it off, and I know there was an issue that happened, and I know that that person apologized. But my thought on that was to address, to address the problem, address the citizens about the concerns, what was happening during some of the meetings, and some of the interaction was not portrayed very well. But at the same time, I think the council and staff have a responsibility to be respectful as well to the citizens. Because, you know, I got on here eight years ago for the first time in the other building, and there were chains up there, and it was kind of like breaking down the barrier, and so we had a good relationship. And I just don't want to see that happen again, where we don't have good interaction back and forth. And we're not going to always agree for sure, but I think we need to communicate, and when there's a problem, address it, and that's just the way I feel.
I just had a couple of things I wanted to say that last Tuesday night, we had the class with the police, and they discussed the school resource officers. And just for, it's a very good class. I hope that all of you will consider taking it. But the one thing that I took away from that is that you can text nine one one. So if you're in a, somewhere where you've got a flat tire or whatever, and you don't have service, you can text nine one one. And so that, to me, is a good thing to know. That's what I took away from it. Also, I saw that Fairfield County, the library, that Kelly Miller Elementary School went there, and they toured the library, and they got the library card. I think it was all of the elementary school except the preschool. They checked out their first book, they had a picnic on the lawn. I think that we need to encourage the other grades or the other grammar schools to encourage students to start young with the books. You know, everybody says, well, you can find out what you want on the internet. But if we don't encourage our young people to still read and go to the library and look up stuff on books, we're going to have a lost generation. We're not even going to need books. Everybody's going to go on the internet and find out everything they need to know. Okay. So then, another thing, we had a luckstone tour on...
I T. I think it's echoing pretty bad.
Is that better? Okay. So we had a tour of the luckstone facility down there, and that place is huge if you haven't been down there. But the one thing that, I mean, is awesome, but when we were coming out, and then he showed us that there's like about eighty acres there, and it's all green grass, because it's out there is all stuff. But he said that they would, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Johnson, but that they would try to get industries to get on that eighty acres there, like maybe a tractor supply or Chick-fil-A. Is that what they said?
Yes, they say they were, had a separate section of their company, maybe to come on some of the property that they have.
Yeah, that eighty acres right inside there.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing was, I attended an E V seminar in Charlotte this past week, and it was sponsored by the Co-ops. But ironically, I knew the H R director. His name is Corey Epps, and his wife is from Fairfield County, actually over in Shelton. And so we met with him, and he wants to see, we want to try to find out what education we need ahead of time that we can put in Midlands Tech, or he suggested dual enrollment with our schools. But also that there are going to be other, and he said that he's going to look out for Fairfield County at Scout, because he's the H R person. But there's going to be other jobs, such as electricians for the charging stations, tire sales, service techs, mechanics, you know, there's all sorts of stuff that will be tied in with electric vehicles. And it was also told that over four million electric vehicles were sold this past summer, up to date this past summer. So you think, well, I'm not seeing very many, but there's four million. And Governor McMaster ordered a study of the E V ecosystem last October, and the eco-development staff was formed. There is a global demand for electric vehicles. You think, well, but it is, it's all over the world. And Mr. Epps said that there are twenty-five employees now, white collar, at Scout. By the end of December, it will be sixty white collars, one hundred and fifty by next year. And he said they will be in full capacity the end of twenty-eighth or the beginning of twenty-ninth. So I've been in touch with him, because I would like for him to come to council and speak, hopefully next time, if it's on his schedule, and he can tell you some very interesting things about Scout. And that's it.
Thank you, council members. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chair, members of council, I just wanted to remind everyone that this isn't the first time that the second public comment session has came off the agenda, and if I'm not mistaken, it is not illegal to take it off the agenda. So I stand with it being off for now.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we are down to item seventeen, executive session. In executive session, we will have a receipt of legal advice and discussion regarding matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging expansion of industries in the area pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty dash four dash seventy A five. It's been moved and properly seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. We are in executive session.